Everybody ready?
I hate late starters.
Everybody good?
Yes.
On the air, okay. Good evening, everybody. Meeting of Tuesday, May 13, 2025, the Oradell Borough Mayor Council was already called to order at 6:30 PM. The council meeting was published in the official newspapers and prominently posted in Borough Hall and filed with municipal clerk in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act. Pleasure of allegiance, Mr. Staff.
A pleasure allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Melissa, can we have a roll call, please?
Sure. Mayor Coe.
Here.
Mr. Carnaval.
Here.
Mr. Staff.
Here.
Mr. Tajian.
Here.
Mr. Kern.
Here.
Mr. Gallow.
Here.
And Mr. Kelly.
Here.
Thank you. First on the agenda, we have two proclamations I will read. One is recognition of Arbor Day, whereas in 1872, the Nebraska Board of Agriculture established a special day to set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed through the nation and the world. And whereas trees can be a solution to combating climate change by reducing the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cutting heating and cooling costs, moderating the temperature, cleaning the air, producing life-giving oxygen, and providing habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Mayor James G. Coe III, mayor of the Borough of Oradell, do hereby proclaim April 25, 2025, as Arbor Day in the Borough of Oradell. I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. Further, I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the wellness of this and future generations. Signed, 25th day of April, 2025. Next one is recognizing May as Mental Health Awareness Month for 2025. Whereas mental health is an essential part of overall well-being, impacting individuals, families, and communities across New Jersey. And whereas one in five American adults experiences a mental health condition each year, and everyone faces challenges in life that can impact their mental health. And whereas, despite its prevalence, mental health remains shrouded in stigma, preventing many from seeking help. And whereas early intervention and access to quality care are crucial for managing mental health conditions and improving quality of life. And whereas May is recognized nationally as Mental Health Awareness Month, providing an opportunity to raise awareness, combat stigma, and promote mental health resources. Now therefore, I, James G. Coe III, mayor of the Borough of Oradell, do hereby proclaim May 2025 as Mental Health Awareness Month in the Borough of Oradell. I further encourage all residents of Oradell to educate themselves and others about mental health conditions, treatment options, and available resources. Challenge stigma by speaking respectfully and inclusively about mental health, to seek help if they are struggling with their mental health, and encourage others to do the same. To support organizations that provide mental health services and advocacy. To create safe and supportive environments for open conversations about mental health. And together, we can create a community where everyone feels empowered to prioritize their mental well-being and seek help when needed. Signed, May 13, 2025. Discussion items for tonight, Mr. Hines. Discussion items.
The first discussion item, we're looking to appoint as a special planner, Mr. Francis Reiner. And he has submitted a proposal that's part of your attachment you should have received. Are there any questions on that?
Right, so just for reference, Fran was appointed previously as our special planner. He has since departed the firm that he worked with, and we would like to retain his expertise and services again in his new firm. And that's what, there's a resolution on the agenda tonight to adopt him as our special redevelopment planner, if the council so chooses.
I very much support that, Mayor.
Thank you, Council President.
Number two, programmatic space analysis study for various borough facilities. This study would be performed by Mr. John Hatch, who has previously worked on the Oradell train station. It would include both the fire department and other facilities for ADA compliance and for potential expansion of needed facilities, such as for the police department.
So, to elaborate a little bit more, because I've been driving Mr. Hines to undertake this project, what this does, so this isn't the first time that the council is looking at the municipal building, the facilities for the police department, or the fire department. There are ADA issues which exist in the fire department, which preclude people with disabilities from reaching the second floor. As a public building, we should comply with those rules and regulations. Mr. Hatch will perform a conceptual study and analysis and a cost estimate advising us, if we were to proceed with that project, what we would look to budget for something like that, and what could be done within the existing building or modification thereof. Secondly, as part of that process, we've asked him to also take a look at the municipal building, and most importantly, the police department. I can say with confidence that, since I was on the council last, what are we going to do about the police department has been before the council. It is not an easy fix or a cheap fix. There are other towns that have spent almost $10 million building a standalone police department. The council is going to need to make decisions in the near future. I believe Mr. Hatch and his firm, Clark, Caton, Hints, has a ton of experience in evaluating municipal facilities. He is going to rely on documents that were done previously, back in 2015, when Councilman Flegging had RSC evaluate this building for modification and provide a cost estimate. But what I'm hoping to get out of him for the council is data to say, if we were to construct, renovate, what have you, what is required in a modern-day police department and a modern-day municipal building? How much space is required? What functions need to be considered? And what services does the staff need available to them in order to carry out our responsibility of governing the borough? The council can then take that data and say, well, okay, now we know what's required. How can we plan for this? How do we want to go about it? And what are we going to do about it? Part of that may include, again, and hopefully if it analyzes this building for a final time, because a decision does need to be made. Or it may say that you should construct a standalone building and move the police department out. Or it may say there's another building in Oradell that may be best suited to accommodate our combined or individual needs. Right now, the council does not have the data to progress this discussion and make an intelligent action on how to address these challenges. And there's something that, you know, we need to invest in our infrastructure. These departments serve us as residents every single day, and I think I've said enough about that. But that's really the high level on what we're asking Clark, Caton, Hints to do for us. It's really a spatial needs analysis, some conceptual planning, and some costing of what options may generate for us in the future.
Mayor, a question. Would this include the DPW facility and the recycling center as well?
It currently does not. John, I think we've left that out of, I've left that out of the scope, because that's a whole separate ball of wax. There's flooding issues there, very different challenges to that building, which I do think we need to address at a point. But we have to do something to address some of these concerns, specifically the police. You know, they have constantly, over the years, communicated to us that they really need better working conditions, and they need a proper police station to conduct their work. And I agree with them. So hopefully, this gives us information to continue that discussion and plan for some decisions in the future.
What is the timetable for the proposal for the fire department from an ADA proposal?
He didn't give us the timeframe yet.
Okay.
But he's given us the scope of services, what he would, who he would bring in, doing.
So Ted, if the council's going to advance this, we can ask him for a comprehensive CPM schedule on how he's going to approach the tasks for all three aspects. I would expect that the council would have a report on this this year.
Good.
And Mayor, speaking on behalf of the police department, I wholeheartedly support this endeavor. So thank you for taking this up and carrying this forward.
Yes, and also in support, Mayor, just not needing any data, just, it still is amazing that 20-some-odd officers are able to fit into this, that small quadrant of this building. The other point, which I'm surprised that we're not mandated to have the ability to have a female police officer, is that correct? We don't have any, or we're not able to?
We had one for a very short period of time, Tom, and accommodations were made for her. I would say they probably were not the best or modern accommodations, but they did work for her needs to have a female officer in the department. Certainly, we would like to, you know, encompass those kinds of accommodations in any planning that we do.
Good. Makes sense.
So number three, Council President and I could probably both speak to this. Special June meeting dates for affordable housing deadlines. So the borough is required to file its fair share housing plan as part of its master plan by June 30. We have a Affordable Housing Subcommittee of the council, the chairman of the planning board, and certain other members of the board and our professionals. We have a Master Plan Reexamination Subcommittee of the planning board. These groups have been talking on how to best figure how Oradell can meet what is required of it under the plan. We all remember that we were successful in getting our number reduced from 186 to 180. We settled with the New Jersey Builders Association, sort of splitting hairs with them on meeting in the middle. There is going to be a realistic development potential that would be what was expected of the borough in terms of realistic development. There's also a perspective need, so that 180 doesn't go away if the realistic development potential says, say, we need to provide for eight units. We're still required to accommodate the others if development allows for it. And part of that, and Bill, I would ask you to step in and correct me if I misspeak here, is that we have to draft and adopt at a later date different zoning regulations and ordinances to be able to plan for that. But the planning board is going to need to have a special meeting the last week of June, and I don't know whether it's they got to meet first or we meet before them.
If I may, the, so the housing element plan first has to be adopted by the planning board, so they need to meet first. Then it has to be then adopted by this body, by the governing body. And that plan, just to allude to what you mentioned, Mayor, the prospective need is aspirational. It's not mandatory that they be built, but there, an opportunity has to be presented through zoning or what have you for the possibility of that in the future. The realistic development potential, that's also subject to a vacant land analysis, which will be conducted by our planner. So we don't know what that number could be. In some municipalities, it's zero, because they're completely built out, and there is no available land. So the vacant land adjustment's a critical factor. And I'm sure, I know the borough did it in the third round, so it's the same type of process. So the housing element plan needs to be adopted by the planning board and endorsed by the governing body. Those are the words in the statute, by June 30. Then by August 31, Fair Share Housing Center or anyone else that wants to object to it or challenge it has to do it in that 60-day period.
Right.
And then we, depending what happens there, you know, we take the next steps.
Right. So I'm looking at the chair of the master plan, I'm sorry, yeah, the chair of the master plan subcommittee's notes on prospective meetings, special meetings for the planning board to accomplish this task in June. And right now, they are targeting, and the planning board will discuss this at its next meeting, I believe it's June 3, having a special meeting on June 24 with the intent of adopting that plan, which means the council would need to meet either the 25th, 26th, or 27th to provide that endorsement so that it can be filed in time in Trenton. So we don't have to have an answer right now, but if people can look at their calendars for those dates, we're going to have to have a special meeting for the purposes of endorsing the plan that the planning board adopts. And that would conclude that process at this current milestone. I will say, thanks to the hard work of current and past councils, we have reached our goal and exceeded our goal that we have been required of over the last three rounds. So the good thing for us is that if we say we're going to do something, we've been owning up to that in the past, and we've been doing what's required and exceeding that in some cases. So hopefully, all these things really work in our favor, and we continue to exhibit that goodwill with this process in filing our plan.
Mayor, just one comment of clarification. So the dates, the 186, or Bill, that's a 184, that's the number we agreed upon, but am I correct in what I hear, that the planner is going to suggest a realistic number, they're going to, between now and June 30, and that number there, and in the past, it was a single-digit numbers or low number, that's what we're going to submit to the DCA? And that's the number that we, if they agree, that we are on hook on to Bill by the end of this round? Is that correct?
Which would be?
Five years or 10 years?
10 years.
Okay. So that's the drop dead number. By 10 years from now, we got to have seven of affordable. So the planner, working with our subcommittees and our planning board, they're going to do the work between now and June 30 to come up with the realistic number of units.
Correct. And I don't recall what your RDP realistic development potential was for the third round, but short of some properties becoming available, in all likelihood, it's going down.
Right.
As far as I know, there's nothing in Oradell that came up in the last few years of all of a sudden.
Because we utilized them last round.
Exactly.
So that's the, Mr. Hart.
The one interesting aspect, though, is also in the legislation. So you've got your obligation, you've got your realistic development potential, but then they also mention the fact that your zoning ordinances should allow for a opportunity for at least 25% against your round four obligation. So I don't know how that's going to factor into everything.
That's going to be an interesting issue, because it's 25% of what?
Right.
25% of the RDP or 25% of the prospective?
It's not, it's not well-defined.
It's not, and that, I think, we won't be alone. I think many of the towns, that's going to be a litigated issue.
Right.
It's 25% of zero or 25% of seven.
I believe the intent was 25% of 180, but.
But again, that's, again.
I respectfully disagree with you, Mr. Carnaval, since we're on the record.
Clear that that's the affordable unit, so that's a multiple, the actual units is a multiple of, that's 15% or 20% of, that's a heck of a lot more. You got to multiply that number by a lot, big numbers, right? Yeah, okay.
So just to recap, the dates, the final week in June is the 6/25, 26/27. That's a Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. We could meet on a Saturday, but this thing has to be filed by the 30. So I would encourage us not to push it too late to the deadline. Sooner the better, once the board does what they need to do. I will say, to the attorney's point, that there is a challenge period to this, which goes to August 30. The question we're trying to ascertain the answer to is, what happens when somebody challenges it? Do we have an ability to amend it? Do we have the ability to negotiate? Does it get thrown out the window? Nobody seems to know exactly how the special adjudicators are going to handle that process. But we're meeting this milestone of the deadline. The work does not stop there. The work will continue well past that. So rest assured that various councils of the planning board and the council have been hard at work for many months at looking to advance this. I would just ask everybody to advise the borough administrator what your availability is that week to schedule a special meeting specifically for endorsing the housing element plan.
Should we not do it before our 24th meeting?
You have to follow the planning board.
Yeah, we have to be after the planning board.
Which is what day?
The 24th.
Same day as our, we have a meeting on the 24th.
I mean, if I, if I may, in other towns in previous years, what we've done is scheduled the mayor and council meeting immediately after the planning board meeting.
Well, I was going to recommend to my colleagues that they watch the planning board meeting.
Logistically, I don't know if that can work.
Yeah, I have to double-check. We have something with the date in June, our meeting schedule got thrown off because of the primary date. So we had to move the meeting of the 10th. So I don't remember what the exact date we're meeting is. I highly doubt we were meeting two weeks back-to-back, but we'll get confirmation on that.
10th and the 24th I have in our.
There's no meeting on the 10th of the council.
No, the 11th.
The 11th and the 24th.
Oh, the 11th and the 24th, okay, there you go.
I mean, this meeting isn't going to take very long. I mean, we can hypothetically schedule it, you know, in the morning, too, if you want, right?
I mean, we can schedule it virtually, right? I mean, however the council, you know, can do it. So share your availability and your thoughts with Mr. Hines, and we'll get something coordinated so that people can have placeholder on their calendar quickly. All right, Mr. Hines, number four.
Number four.
Capital budget recap.
We have the chief financial officer. I would like to propose that we save this till last, do the other items, five, six, and seven, because we have made further revisions. Because the mayor and council has been provided the 2025 capital budget with original request and revised, and we have some additional to make, which we will make as soon as we conclude the other three points. Background checks for all borough employees.
Ed, hang on. So does everybody on the council have a spreadsheet? I don't, I don't have one.
I have extra copies here.
Okay. All right, so you want to skip over this for right now, that's fine. So five, we had some discussion enclosed about, but why don't you summarize it, Ed?
Presently, background checks are absolutely mandatory for police department officers, for coaches, in the sports, anybody that has to deal with senior citizens, children are required to have background checks. Last year, the borough enlarged that responsibility and included volunteer firemen, EMT employees, employees in the borough to have background checks. So the discussion for the mayor and council would be, do we expand this to all employees for the borough of Oradell? I might add that we reimburse the people who undergo these background checks. It's $57 per person, so that would be the issue. Last year, we expanded it to volunteer firemen and EMT. And now the question is, do we expand it to all employees?
Right. So I think the discussion that came out of close was that the council feels it would be appropriate to adopt a new, by resolution or ordinance, that requiring all borough employees, given the trust the public has placed in them, undergo a background check before final appointment in whatever their position is that they're being hired.
Over the age of 18.
Over the age of 18. Well, in some instances, counselors are done.
Right.
Right, for camp.
Yeah.
So I'll leave it to the attorney and Mr. Hines to figure out the specifics on the language.
I'm just thinking now, would that include fingerprints? Or in the past, it did, or is that?
I think they do have to.
They do it there, or we used to do it here?
It's a third, no, we don't do it here. It's a third-party processor, they make an appointment, they go, they fill out couple forms.
That was the big issue in the past with our coaches, with what to do with the fingerprint and the records and who's storing them.
Yeah.
But that's all on one.
We don't keep any of that.
Don't do that anymore.
No liability for us.
Okay, so we'll look to amend that at a future meeting. Six, okay.
Six. I've, Mr. Mayor, you noted that there was a demonstration at Walter Wallace Shorar Park?
Yep.
Which amounted to, I understand from the police department, approximately 100 people, and no notice was given officially to anyone at Borough Hall. So you asked me to refer that to the borough attorney for review, about the possibility of an ordinance that would require prior notice. No fee would be attached to the permit, but prior notice to allow us to prepare for a safe demonstration. And Mr. Bailey may have a comment to make on that.
Yeah, it can be done. The hard part is, it needs to be balanced between First Amendment rights versus providing for the public health, safety, and welfare. It has to be content neutral. I recently finished a case for another municipality while not quite on, for, with this, is pretty similar. And in that case, the federal court did upheld what that municipality did. I know of another municipality that recently adopted a similar ordinance, and I will check as. As far as I know, it hasn't been challenged yet. I don't think the timeframe for it to be challenged has expired yet, but yeah, I can start putting something together on that.
Yeah, that would be great. And just to recapture, I'm sure anybody who lives in town suffered through some traffic on Kinderkamak, what was it, two weeks ago on a Wednesday? Listen, I think that people's right to have free speech and protest is a great right that we're granted as citizens of this country, and by no means am I looking or suggesting that that should be suppressed or controlled in violation of those rights. However, I don't feel that the First Amendment precludes our right to govern either, and to ensure for the safe assembly of people to express their constitutional right. I've had a lot of experience with these things. When I worked in New York City with the NYPD, I've suggested to our officer in charge that he reach out to them to get pertinent sections from their patrol manual on how they handle these things, because we want them to be able to happen, but happen in a safe manner, where we don't have, for instance, sidewalks that are blocked and a pedestrian or somebody, a kid riding a bike gets forced to go into the street. We don't want somebody coming in and just assuming, taking over public property without, again, having an opportunity to discuss with our public safety officials what their goal is, what they'd like to do, how we can help them accomplish that, but do it in a safe and orderly manner. So, having something on the books that would jumpstart that process, I think, is a very important thing for us to undertake, so thank you very much.
I just got a question about this ordinance. Would it be able to restrict certain areas and, you know, allocate for certain areas that could be used for public assembly?
That's where it's got to be careful, because generally, you know, what's considered a public forum, a forum, a limited public forum, and not entitled to, so that has to, you know, be given strong evaluation.
Right. So, for example, John, if somebody wants to protest, I don't know, the Kitchen Vision Building because they have the wrong color paint on their cabinets, you can't tell them, hey, you got to protest down in front of Aura. You can't stand in front of the building, because what's the point of their protest, right? They're protesting that particular business. Same example could be used with the protests that happened in front of Tesla on Route 17, which could be viewed as a very unsafe environment in and of itself, but you have to consider the proximity to what people are trying to speak about. Now, you can say, you can't block traffic, you can't block sidewalks.
Correct.
We've created an area for you to do it. So, you know, the protest that happened two weeks ago was very general in its nature. It wasn't specific to anything in Oradell, all fine. That probably could have happened anywhere. But if they said, we want to do it on the front lawn of Oradell Public School at 3:00 when school gets out, obviously, we have a problem and a concern with that, and we would say that that's not permitted there. And we'd work with them to find the next best place that that could be accommodated. So, it is a balancing act, and it's got to be real in order to be substantiated in our decisions.
Yeah, but probably not a common occurrence in Oradell, happily, but we've all seen the big rats blown up.
Right.
Typically, in front of a construction project, there's something for whatever reason, so...
And don't forget, we have to call in resources from the police department. We have to make sure they're available.
Right. So, this was very challenging. You know, the police did a fantastic job dealing with this when it just showed up. 100 people requires resources, guys had to be recalled or called in. They did not have a lot of time to prepare for this. They did a fantastic job, and, you know, protesters got their message out, everybody did it safely. But I think we need a tool like this on the books to help them effectively have a process on how this gets done.
Okay.
Number seven is electronic purchasing. Mr. Mayor, I'm sure you have some comments on that.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Heinz. So, this is not a new topic. I spoke about this when I gave my talk in January about what we're hoping to accomplish, part of which is making Borough Hall more transparent and accessible and easier for residents to do business with the borough. That's a payment thing, not an electronic purchasing. But right now, all the council members get a briefcase delivered to them by a member of the police department, primarily with a lot of purchase orders that you need to sign as a chair overseeing certain departments. We don't have to work that way anymore. We could migrate to a cloud-based version of a software platform we already use, where you would basically log in and have a queue or an inbox of those same purchase orders. You would be signing hard copy, and you can click off and click approve, and we have a record of the process of processing that purchase order. There's an electronic trail and tracking associated with it, saving a lot of paper, we're saving a lot of time. It's just the way people are doing things today. So, I've been working with the staff to get this done, and they've been receiving it with open arms. It's a place that they've not tread water before, so they're trying to get their feet planted on how this should work for us, and do we have issues with, you know, is somebody going to have the program on their laptop and we need a VPN, or are we using a cloud-based thing where we're just logging in through credentials? I think that this is something that the council has unanimously shared its support of in the past. I just want to reaffirm that, you know, as we're working to become more effective and efficient, this is the type of thing that, you know, we need to partner with the staff on being able to accomplish, and we need to know what's required to do that. Is it an extra function? Is it resources to change the platform, what have you? You've heard enough from me on this. If anybody has anything they want to add, I think this would really be moving us into the 22nd century of governing here.
Good question. How soon can we start?
As soon as, as soon as we can figure out how to get it done.
So, and to that point, are some of the asks in the capital or operating budget, would that help this here? I would think it would, just some of the, whether it's files or the electronic capabilities of bringing us into the 21st century, that we saw some presentation from the various departments.
Yeah.
I'm not a tech guy, but...
So, Tom, I think what's going to come to the council at a future meeting, I've not had the opportunity to talk, but Councilman Gallow, Administrator Heinz have been talking with various IT professionals that might be able to help us get a greater efficiency and greater throughput of platforms we already pay for.
Yeah.
But we're not using to their fullest capacity. So, hopefully, that's for discussion at a future meeting. It may not cost a ton more, because we're already paying for the service, right? It's really just us maximizing the efficiency of its use, but there will be some ancillary costs for things. If we were to switch from, say, a server-driven version of admins to a cloud-driven version, I'm sure there's, you know, a different cost with that than we're currently paying. That's more of an upcharge than a new expense, and we do have some money planned for and capital for IT-related ventures. And if not, we'd be back before the council to talk about what's, you know, what resources are needed to do that.
Now, back to number four. Mrs. Chen, do you have copies to hand out to the council members? As you look at it, our goal was to achieve a total capital budget of $3 million. If you look at this present sheet, we're at $3,534,231. So, we have not yet achieved our goal. We have money in the capital improvement fund of $150,000, which is statute. We need 5% for $3 million, so we have that. Katie and I have looked at further reductions in the capital budget, which are not reflected in this. We were doing this today, and those reductions would be, we're down to what I call sofa money, not big numbers, but smaller numbers. A reduction in the flashing pedestrian push-to-cross signs of $32,000. Not that they're not needed, but are they needed now? So, we're proposing a potential deferral of that cost. On the front page, a potential deferment of tree planting and digitalization of borough records, which amounts to $80,000. A question was asked, a good one, 20% soft costs. Why do we need those included? And we did refer that to the, I did refer to the chief financial officer, who had spoken about this with our auditor, Mr. Lurch, and the answer is, we do need to account for soft costs.
Correct. It's recommended for about 20%, 20% to 25%.
Mr. Lurch, welcome.
Thank you very much. I apologize for the late entrance.
Quite all right. You're here at the right time.
Thank you, sir.
Because this is one of the questions I had about the 20% and how it may apply to the different types of capital projects we're undertaking. Are we over padding this for 20%? Or should there be some reduced percentage because some of the projects don't have the long life expectancy and may not require some of those funds?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The 20%, the 20, there's different, so let me just explain the statutes. It's NJSA 48-220, what they call. That's a statute reference. 2-20 is the actual statute. And the statute refers to costs that you may charge to a bond ordinance other than hard construction costs. And those costs typically include engineering fees, architectural fees, financial advisory fees, bond counsel fees. And the actual percentage, 20% would be an appropriate percentage for those projects that require those type of services. A road project, a road project would be that kind of a project. We have the engineering fees, inspection fees, everything else. 20% would be an appropriate number on that. 20% would be a little bit excessive for equipment purchases. If you were buying new computers or new SUVs for the, you know, for the police department or something like that, then clearly you don't have those kind of costs involved. So, you know, be more likely to have approximately 10% for a 2-20 cost on that. So, the way it's, I mean, 20% is fine, I'm not trying to contradict that, but the way you would put those orders together, then you put those different purposes, like you have here, give one its own, associate its own 2-20 with each one, and then whatever the bottom line comes out to be, it would be probably some blended number.
So, back to the work that both the CFO and I did. I feel like the warm-up act, actually for the main act, but we'll be to Mr. Lurch soon. It's, the biggest items are always in the Department of Public Works. That's true in every town I've been in, and those pieces of equipment are very expensive. The original ask for a dump truck was $525,000, and the need for a new sweeper, which is now 11 years old, and if you imagine, it's used every day, as it should be, cleaning the streets, we do need a new one. And this particular model is interesting because it is an electric model, and so their operating costs over the life are dramatically cheaper than a diesel, but the cost is double. Now, this is also the result because we would be the first in the state, to my knowledge, to have a RAVO all-electric. This is a dramatically reduced cost. Actually, the equipment was outside today for look at by all the council members. So, the question is, to reach our goal of $3 million, do we go to an all-electric, which over the life of it would be cheaper to operate, or do we go with the diesel, which is half the price? And then there is the dump truck. We have been discussing, can we reconfigure a truck already down at the DPW? And actually, the mayor, with his experience as a DPW superintendent, was down there with the superintendent, looking at the particular truck. But sometimes you quickly find out that redoing what you already have becomes as expensive. So, the DPW superintendent is getting quotes to do exactly what you proposed, so he's going to come back to us. So, they'd ask for a Mason truck and a dump truck, plus the RAVO all-electric. That was over $1 million. So, those are the options, because we have cut more, but they're small, small change. To get to the $3 million is very hard. Mrs. Chen, anything I said that you would contradict? I think we've reviewed every line item.
Yeah, we have reviewed the projects. We also have follow-up meetings with department heads. We were able to make some minor modification adjustments to some of the requests. For the police, they originally requested two vehicles, two patrol vehicles, and one motorcycle. And I believe they, the police department came back with a request of one vehicle and one motorcycle to move forward.
So, that saved $87,000.
Yeah.
Because the other police vehicle may be needed, and we're just deflecting the cost into next year. So, we may want to just take another look at that.
Okay.
You're saying budget for two vehicles?
I think budgeting for two.
Versus the one and the motorcycle?
Yeah.
Well, one of the things I think we were trying to accomplish as well is that, you know, OEM had asked for an upgrade to their vehicle, which, you know, for the amount it gets used, is very important when it does get used. For the amount it gets used, doesn't necessarily need to be a brand-new frontline vehicle, and we could benefit from taking one of the newer-old police SUVs and providing that to OEM. That saved us $87,000 under their request, which we have not accounted for in here, because we would hope to repurpose a vehicle.
That's exactly what I'm thinking. That's what I wanted to talk with them, to see what the condition of the two, the one that may be rolling off, two that may be rolling off, what condition that they're in, if we can repurpose it for OEM.
For OEM, okay.
To the, go ahead, Roger.
I'm very uncomfortable taking off the trees. With the amount of trees that we have given up, I just feel going back on... Going back on the trees puts us in a bad situation. I mean, we took almost 600 trees down for the ashpores. What I will add, John and I have spoken, is I think I can save us a minimum of $100,000 bucks on the RAVO unit, just based on my preliminary discussions out here. I think I'm going to be below five on it.
I don't see that happening, but they've, the price they've offered us is already $150,000 less than they would sell it for.
There's a little room in there. He already told me that.
As far as the trees, I do see that it's not revised here. It looks like the original asking was for $30,000, and it still says $30,000.
Yep, they were talking...
It's trying to identify things that we could consider. Right, yeah, I agree with Roger. Planting trees is important. We did take a lot of trees down, but what else here is more important?
The one thing Steve mentioned in his, I think, aren't we statutorily required to have digitization of records within a certain period of time coming up? Like, there's a hard deadline?
I don't think so.
From a construction standpoint, aren't we supposed to be compliant, have everything online available by 2027 or something like that? That's why Steve kind of presented it that way. At least, that's what I thought he said.
I think he was just looking to digitize his files and get rid of the paper, because they don't have the room to store it.
Okay.
Well, I would like to bring up the line item for the motorcycles for police. I'm not sure that, as a public safety committee, we had a chance to really discuss whether or not we really need a motorcycle for the department at this time.
Yeah, I would propose pulling that, actually, altogether.
Would you be not opposed to putting up, pulling the motorcycle and putting back trees? I mean, it's a wash, but...
Well, I'm actually looking at a couple of the lines even within police that I Well, I'm actually looking at a couple of the lines even within police that I think that we have to get back from the prosecutor's office on some forfeited funds.
Yeah.
Because there's some other softer things, some smaller things in there, handguns, patrol, portable radios. They may be included. I'm not 100% certain, you know, what the limits are. I do know that there are limits with the forfeited funds.
Right.
But I think that that kind of stuff may be in there. So, right away, Roger, there's $14,000 right there. So, you're halfway there.
I'm also going to add, I thought in our discussions, the Midland Avenue was included in the $600,000 for roads. So, there's $100,000 bucks right there.
Are we required to match the DOT grant to some extent? Or no? It's an outright grant?
No, there's no, there's zero match for it.
Is Dave or John, do you know if this was accounted for this way because of the concrete work that may need to be done with repairing curbs and other things?
So, you have grant money from Phase 1, which was last year, and then you have monies for this year. I think that was the anticipated overall cost for the project, and I think that's the differential, what was needed.
Okay.
To make up that difference.
Okay, gotcha.
And I thought that's how we got up to 600, that we were including the incremental Midland in that.
I think we also included extra money to pay for the roads that we can possibly take off our roads list.
Eastside, yeah. But I think we weren't counting on 700 for roads, we were counting on 600. So, that would be 100,000 bucks right there. And look, you know me, I'm all about, let's put as much asphalt down as possible.
Can we just verify that's in there?
Can we, so, so we're saying that the roads improvement and the Midland together is 600, not 700?
Correct. And John, am I right with that?
I guess. I mean, I just want to make sure that we have enough.
We can't guess. I want to make sure it's in there.
Yeah, yeah.
Because there's flexibility in there. We put flexibility built in there. And I'm 99.9% sure 600 was the total for roads.
So, the beauty of what we're doing right now is hashing these things through for the staff to then go back and confirm, deny, and report back to the council. Because we're not calendered to adopt a capital budget for a whole other meeting.
Absolutely.
We wanted to see, once those presentations were made, in a big picture, how did this all, you know, pair up?
But that 100,000 is not SOFA money. And that's what I'm saying, I'm coming to the table with that.
Right. We just got to make sure, like Dave said, that's not a delta for the grant project to do all of Midland. We need an extra 100 just for that project.
Yeah.
Right? Because I think 600 has been a standing number that the council's been budgeting for the last number of years to put towards road paving.
Yeah, we talked about 300.
Yep, 300.
And 300 was the Midland delta.
Right.
So, that's how we got to 600.
Right.
So, I think that 100 can be given back.
Just as long as we confirm, yeah.
Yeah, again, confirm, but I believe that that's a substantial number to talk about.
Katie, for the Memorial Field stewardship project, and then the pedestrian walkway, what's the timing on that in terms of, we have the match, but has, both have been granted, correct? We've received, does one grant expire quicker than the other? Do you know the timing on that?
I'm not sure about the timing.
I think the more important thing, Ted, is we receive these grants, and we never had the money to match it.
Right.
And that's what we're trying to do now, otherwise, we're not going to be able to accept.
Okay, that's why I was.
Yeah, but we have to, our borough share has never, right now, we're addressing the borough share in this capital budget.
Right, so the match.
Correct, yes.
Just to get back to roads, in terms of Midland Road and that whole area up in the Latch String, the work that PSCG did, mayor, council folks, that they are going to potentially this summer repave curb to curb the work that they did. They ripped up and placed new pipes in there. Can anybody provide some color there?
I can jump in if you'd like on that.
Yeah.
So, my understanding is they're paving curb to curb. We don't have a specific date as of yet. The discussions with them were after the 4th of July that it would take place, but I'm hearing rumblings of other towns, everything's moving all over the place. So, we'll have to get in touch with them to get a solid date. But at our meeting that we had with them in person, the discussion was to have it just after the 4th of July.
Yeah, so that's anywhere that they ripped up the road, they're cutting. So, that's great news for not just Midland.
Well, let's be clear.
Yes.
That's not somewhere they ripped up the road yesterday. That's where they did the work in the fall.
Long strip.
Right.
And that, was that primarily in the Latch String area, or was that?
So, basically, from Ordell Avenue to Soldier Hill, from Kendrick Comac to Forest, anything that the gas company did within those confines that they'll be doing, with the exception of Midland, the borough's going to be taking on that project through a DOT grant.
Okay. And is the plan in the future to do the rest of the town, wherever, they're upgrading their pipes and whatever else they're doing? Is that, who knows?
Yeah, we'll have to work through that. I know there was discussions, I think, for the east side, which is where they're looking to venture next, east side, like Beechwood, those different sections of roads and stuff.
Yeah, and Tom, there needs to be a lag, right, between when they do the work and when that final paving is done, to allow for any settlement? Because otherwise, you may have depressions in the roadway because the fill has settled.
And typically, what they, they like to wait at least 90 days to let everything kind of settle out.
Yeah.
So, we're in that window already at this point.
So, could, that could be potential massive savings to the borough if?
Millions.
If they're potentially over the next amount of years going to repave a good amount of those streets.
Correct. So, the stuff they're doing this year, you know, I think when we looked at the numbers, was around the million-dollar range of what, by them doing the curb to curb.
Yeah.
There's a big cost savings for the borough there as far as that side of it. I mean, there's going to be some cases where they're not going to do curb to curb just because of the age of the road and stuff.
Right.
So, the borough will have to pick up the difference on those. But ultimately, it is a cost savings to the borough.
Great, thank you.
Katie, one other item, I just, I'll follow up with you on is Under Fire for the OFD fitness facility. Just want to get more detail on the expense.
Okay.
And Katie, if you can comment on the other sheet that you gave us, our total debt service, if it's, we have about 12 million or so outstanding, five issued but authorized but not issued.
Right.
And then this would be an additional three, right? So, if we put that together.
Yeah, so, so I also have provided the amortization schedule for your review. So, in this year's budget, we're retiring $1,135,000 in principal of debt service. So, we're retiring that amount in the current budget. So, for our bonds, currently, we have two bonds, two general bonds, 2024 general bonds and 2019 general bonds. The sum of those two bonds is equate to $12,161,000. So, that's our long-term debt, permanent financing right now. That's our total bonds. We also have three ordinances, capital ordinances that are currently authorized but not issued, meaning we haven't gone out for funding yet for these capital projects. And there are, the total of that is $5,255,560. So, sometimes this year, we may have to go out and have a note sale, which is short-term borrowing on those three capital ordinances. So, we have the funding in place to do those, to pay for those projects, essentially.
And that is fire truck, those types of large expenses.
Correct.
So, that math is correct. If I add those 12 and five and three, and if you can comment on historically, the trend, or how does that, if it's potentially a total of 20 in debt service, how does that relate to past years?
Well, we.
In terms of an overall number?
Well, we, I mean, it's all based on, we're trying to be, you know, we wanted to be able to have some improvements to the town, yeah, roads, and that's why we always keep a $600,000 in road painting program. You know, we don't want it to, we wanted to keep up all the improvements. We don't, and also, we have a vehicle replacement plan. So, we do, we do put in capital projects, that's about $2 million, $2.5 million every year, but we're also reducing debt as well. So.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, we also fix some short-term, right?
We did, we did last year. We did about.
So, that went from operating to capital.
Correct, we did. We did an $8.9 million permanent financing last year.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so, if any member of the council has further questions or suggestions, if they can share them with Ed and Katie, I would ask, hopefully by Monday of next week, given that a week from this weekend is Memorial Day, and there will not be a lot of time prior to our next meeting, and we would hope to adopt, that would give the staff enough time to get back to you with the information you seek, or make any further recommendations of a final plan for us to adopt the 27th. Everybody good with that?
Yeah, I just want to state also to Councilman Tashin, I do think we should keep the tree planting line item in.
Next up, 2025 operating budget. We are having our public hearing this evening. With us, we have our chief financial officer, Katie Chen, and our borough auditor, Mr. Dieter Lurch, accompanied by his son, Rob Lurch of Lurch Finsey, who are wonderful auditors and have helped us tremendously since coming into office last year. I will turn the mic over to you guys to present the 2025 operating budget in our public hearing.
Do you want, do you have your presentation? You want me to address it, however the mayor wants to go?
I do, but the screen's not working tonight, so.
Just one second.
A lot of money.
I don't know if you want to update it.
No, it's a lot of money on technology that doesn't work.
I heard that on the way, I actually heard that on the way over, unfortunately, because.
Just a shame, because when it does, people home can see it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thanks, Katie.
Yeah, I guess, does everybody have a copy of Katie's highlights? Why don't you go through your highlights a little bit, and then I'll comment and.
Sure.
If you're okay with that.
Yeah.
I think we should stick on the high comments, and then I'll take it over a little bit, and we'll assume that you shared all the detail with the.
I have a copy for you. They have a copy of this, right?
They do. I had, I made some hard copies after realizing the, the screen's not working. Okay.
Is it possible to pull in the screen?
No, the OBTV crew member said that it's, there's some technol, there's technical issues tonight, so.
They need you to put it in.
Sorry, do you want mine? You can, here. Go for that.
Thanks, Councilman.
Oh, you got it?
I got it.
Beautiful.
All right. Okay. Good evening. The municipal budget is one of the most critical financial process that the borough takes on every year. The 2025 budget process started in the winter of 2024, with budget request forms being sent out to the department heads. After the department heads completed the request forms, the first round of meetings were scheduled with the administrator and the CFO to carefully analyze each department budget. The department heads then presented their departmental requests to the governing body during the budget discussion at the mayor and council meetings. Tonight, I'll be presenting the 2025 municipal budget. I'm going to start with the 2025 budget highlights. The total spending of 2025 budget versus 2024 budget, net of grants, is, represents 2.2% increase, and that is $439,126. Borough fund balance, or some people may call it surplus, is up approximately $875,000. The fund balance at the end of December 31st, 2024, was $4,673,000. The borough was awarded $500,000 from the DCA for the acquisition of the rectory, $81,000 from the CDBG, which is Community Development Block Grant, for the senior center kitchen improvements, the $67,000 from the local recreation improvement grants to fund the Hoffman Field irrigation system. And because of these grants, it helped with continued lower future debt burden. We also have some, identified some major savings in this year's budget. One of the savings is the debt service, which is the long-term debt that we permanent financed, the 8.9 million, from short-term to long-term debt. We also, one of, another major savings is the prescription costs, that we got off the self-insured prescription plan, and then we went into a fully insured state plan. We also identified some major spending expenses, and we identified the contractual salaries as one of the increases, the insurance, and garbage recycling costs. Flip onto the second, second page, you'll see a pie chart of the budget revenues. The budget revenues, so, the largest source of income in the municipal budget is the amount to be raised by taxpayers. And on this pie chart, you'll see the municipal tax levy represents 74.52% of the budget revenues. And also, we also have calculations from all other miscellaneous revenue sources. You can see 7.54 is from fund balance anticipated. We also have fees, permits, interest, fines equals to 5%, state aid 3.78%, the state and county grants 3.30, received from delinquent taxes, .8, library tax levy 3.84, and other source of items in general revenues 1.23%. So, you can see a pie chart of all the revenues that represent the budget side. The next page, next slide, is the, this is just a comparison of 2024 and 2025, the increases and decreases from various categories. So, the bottom line is, we have an increase of 5.34% on the revenue side. Now, we go to the 2025 budget appropriations. So, on this pie chart, the top three largest budget appropriations are salaries and wages, that represents 32.18%, and they are mostly contractual salary increases. We also have general medical insurance, that is 13.61%, and we have other expenses, which is 12.11%.
I don't think they need to go through the detail at this, unless they want to go through the detail. I think they know the detail. But let me just tie that all together a little bit. Are you finished with that?
Oh, I have a couple more slides.
Oh, please, I'm sorry. I told you we were flipping those slides.
I think, absent the screens for the public's benefit, if Katie wants to go through, take a few extra minutes.
Oh, no, I'm fine. I just, yeah.
Okay. So, yeah, these are just more details, more comparison of 2024 and 2025 budget increases and decreases. Now, when it comes to the municipal levy, taxes, on average assessed home, the total levy, including municipal and library, is $16,629,880. An average home is $792,082. So, on average municipal levy on a typical home that's assessed at $792,82, it's $5,584. And that is a tax increase of 195 over 2025, over 2024. And that is an increase per month of $16.25. The next. The next page.
Oh, Jersey Mike's.
Jersey Mike's. So Jersey Mike's, and that's a well-known, that's a well-known chain.
Jersey Mike's, what are you doing there?
A chain. Yeah, it would be really nice to see on the screen. Jersey Mike's is a well-known chain sandwich shop. So our municipal library tax levy increase is $16.25 per month. Daily tax increase is 54 cents per average household. But when you go to a Jersey Mike's to get a sandwich, it's, you have to pay, it's more than a tax levy increase. It's $17.60 plus tax, plus sales tax.
So I'm going to ground bag it to lunch one day a week.
Exactly. That's where I'm getting.
Katie, you're discounting the fact that you would share half that sandwich with someone else. So think about how much further it's going.
That's right. So that's just my little bit of a.
There you go, Jersey Mike's.
Yes. So that's all I have on the, on my presentation.
Thank you, Katie.
Thank you. Katie?
I know this is a lot of work, and thank you very much. For the public, this is just the Ordele portion of the taxes. Please remember, there's a regional school tax, and Ordele public tax, and the county tax. So this is, what is it, 32% of the total taxes is the Ordele?
Something like that, yes.
So, you know, I want the public to realize that.
Perspective.
Thank you.
$5,000 a year, that's.
Yeah, sign me up.
Katie, I got a question with regards to the allocation for the library. So we're giving them an extra $11,000 plus on top of what they had for their tax levy. Is that correct?
We're giving them what is required by the, by the state. So it's what is the.
By the mill rate.
By the, one sort of mill.
All right. Well, I see an extra.
Which is already an increase from last year.
All right, I see an extra $11,000 there, though. Is that?
Well, it's about $95,000, the library. The library appropriation gone from 700, the tax from 721,000 to 814.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks for clarification. Katie, just one question. Do you recall what the increase percentage was in 2023?
The 2023, uh, is it here?
I don't know what.
From '23 to '24? Do you know what the percent increase was, Rob?
The amounts to be raised increased 7.28%.
Okay, so I want to make a point. So while the borough is working to provide more services more efficiently, your taxes went up 7.28% in 2023. We almost cut that in half last year to 4.03%. We're again working harder to cut that to 2.2%. So I'm happy to say the arrow is going in the right direction, which is down.
Reiterating what Councilman Tashian said, that's just the municipal portion.
Correct, which is what we control and what we're working to control.
And it's still a third of the taxes you pay, so.
I get it.
No, I'm positively saying.
Yeah, I'm not done, though. So I want to say, this takes a lot of work, and I want to take a minute to thank Katie and her staff, and Dieter and Rob, and everybody at our auditing firm, for really, and Ed, to help, helping guide us in this direction. This doesn't happen without a team of talented professionals and staff, and, you know, we're going to continue to need your help to drive that even lower, right? I don't know that taxes will ever really go down, but we can work to curtail the increases best we can, and still provide the highest quality service we can afford. So I want to say thank you. This is, you guys go through a lot. This is like accounting season for, you know, CFOs in municipal government, and you guys have no easy task, and everybody has their hand out they want, and it's unfortunately your job to be the heavy and say maybe. So thanks for taking the bullet on our behalf in mitigating some of those requests, and I think this council's really worked hard and done a fantastic job, you guys, to, you know, reduce a cost to the taxpayer, so I can't say thank you enough.
Thank you.
Mr. Lurch, did you have anything?
Yeah, let me just say, just, I want to keep it brief. I thought you did a marvelous job telling Katie, so I just want to publicly acknowledge that, and I know you spent a tremendous amount of time and effort on it as well. Let me just make a couple of overall comments. I think everyone on this town council should be very, very proud of the fiscal diligence that you all do. As a result thereof, your surplus this year is at a $4.6 million level, okay? That's, that's up substantially from last year, which was 3.7 million. So we're at a 4.6 million. Let me just relate that, what it means to the finance world and to the Wall Street world. And we do care what Wall Street thinks about us, because the question was asked appropriately so about the debt we issued, the 8.9 million. You're going to access the markets again for short-term debt. And so your surplus right now is at a 23% level of your spending. That's AAA country. 20% is AAA country. For a typical municipal town, for a typical, not a city, I'm going to typical municipal town, the surplus balance that they ask to, that they recommend that you carry is somewhere between 10% and 15% of your operating budget. So that would be somewhere between 2 to 3 million. They would be very comfortable with that, to have an investment-grade rating, an A rating, and we have a double A rating in this town. So again, you're in AAA rating, the surplus is very, very healthy, and at the same time, you have a decreasing tax rate. So I think, you know, it's very easy to succumb in a lot of towns, you know, certain towns, not a lot, certain towns, would succumb and kind of, you know, replenish their reserves. That has all kinds of negative effects as you go forward. So that's not something that you've done, you very responsibly have reduced it. I just want to make another comment. Towns are facing very, very challenging times right now, and the challenging times are, you know, everybody, the entire state got over $5 billion, and every town received that American Rescue money, including us, including Ordele. Now that the spigot is dry, okay? So you're going to see some very substantial increases, especially in the cities, because they use those American Rescue monies to pay for salaries. I mean, that's, and operating expenses. We had the benefit, we had $175,000 in the budget last year, 173 and change of American Rescue Plan money. We have no American Rescue Plan in this budget. That alone would have increased your budget by, you know, by 1% alone, would have been a $170,000 increase. You've managed to avert that. You actually have a tremendous budget here, where your total spending plan is only going up $420,000, $429,000. That's the total spending plan. Your total spending plan is only going up 2.3%. The total spending plan, how'd you accomplish that? Health insurance alone, those in state health insurance this year was a 16% increase, okay? How'd you avert it? You averted, because you made some legislative changes, and you saved in the prescription costs. And so you offset that 12% increase, the 16% increase is what the increase was, 16%, by reducing your prescription cost by up to $400,000. What else did you do? You took advantage of the capital markets, and you went out and did a permanent financing. Tough permanent financing question was asked, and appropriately so, because Wall Street and the rating agency do look how much of your budget is to pay off the debt. Your debt service is down $400,000. So the taxpayers now, the bill that they're paying is $400,000 less than it was last year. So you had the savings in the health, the savings in the debt service, the savings in the prescription really offset your operational increases. And that's how you managed to keep it at the 2.2%. You have a very, what we call, there's a lot of, you know, certain budgets, I don't know if I'm saying this, I get rid of that word a lot, used one-shot revenues type of things to support the budget. That's not the case here. Your spending is going to $430,000, you're raising the taxes $398,000. It's a structurally sound budget. I'm just saying. So there's, you know, I think it's a very responsible, and I think, you know, at least you can count on going forward that you have a structurally, fiscally sound budget, and I just wanted to put that out there, and that's.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, and I think, and I really, that's responsible for everybody that's sitting up there.
Yeah, I mean, just to conclude, you know, rightfully so, people got a little bit nervous when they got their new valuation cards on the assessment of their property. And while we're delivering a very responsible budget, people's properties are appreciating in this town, a lot.
24%.
Not directly reflected in their tax bill, because you've shown the numbers to us here, and it's as responsible as it's always been. But, you know, we're delivering a high value for the residents and allowing their assets to appreciate over time as we continue to plan for the future, so.
You're welcome.
Huh?
You're welcome from the realtor.
Just one other comment, just to, to agree with your point of the hard work that's not captured here in terms of the budgets recently through the hard work and negotiations, the surplus you mentioned going to 4.6. We've increased the interest, and I saw one of the Excel spreadsheets had a number, but that number should increase substantially to the tune of maybe $100,000, just by negotiating with our bank within the last month or two to substantially earn that interest and take advantage of varying interest rates. So that could be 100,000 or so annually to help that cause, so.
Let me make one point that slipped my mind. Thank you so much, that's very appropriate. The other thing, the town has a phenomenal tax collection rate. Your tax collection rate was 99.48%. 99.48, that's almost 100%. Everybody in Ordele pays their taxes. Nobody doesn't pay their taxes here. I bring that out, that's a phenomenal tax rate, and what happens is you actually regenerate surplus, because when you brought up the 100,000 interest, which is great. But, because when we, when the budget is prepared, you'll see there's a reserve on collected taxes, and don't get too technical, of 745,000.
That's the one question that I have circled here, yeah. Why is that? Is that?
Yeah, let me address that, because, and the other councilman pointed out, we collect money for everybody, for the school, the county.
Just to be safe.
So the tax collector's office here takes in $50 million, 51 and change to be exact, I like to round everything. We take in $50 million. So the law requires that if all 50 million don't pay, you have to put a bad debt allowance, so to speak. So if I were going to, if you were going to say to me, oh, I know 99% of the people are going to pay, I would have put a reserve on collected taxes of 500,000. I would have said, well, 1% is not going to pay. At least historically, in the two years I've been here, and I think, you know, is that we're somewhat conservative, and we're not going to assume that 99% will pay. That's a great collection rate. You actually take it down by 1.5%. So you say, well, we know we're comfortable saying 98.5% of the people will always pay. So now, anything over and above that, which you had a whole percentage above that, goes right back to the surplus, and that's why part of that contributing surplus that went from the 3.6 to the 4.7 million, 500,000 of it comes because we collected a 4% higher than what we project. And we project conservatively, so, you know, and I just want to put that out there. So that's how you get that 1% to come back to the surplus. Again, which is, now it's put back in the budget for taxpayer relief, because we increased it from 1.4 to 1.6, the surplus. So it's really, you're just kind of running a nice conservative fiscal house, so to speak, and whatever gets regenerated goes back for the tax relief.
Okay. So we're actually budgeting for, I mean, so the taxes, yeah, we're collecting, we're budgeting for collecting less than what we collect.
That is correct.
Now, those funds go into the surplus, so that's, okay.
That is correct.
All right, so that is conservative, yeah, that's great. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions from the council? Okay, seeing none, I will open it to, well, they're not done yet, I'm going to open it to public comment. We have a motion to open to public comment.
Second.
Call in favor. Any opposed? Okay, floor is now open for public comment on the 2025 budget only.
Well, it's in this, good evening. I listened attentively to everything that was said here tonight, and I had written some things down as we were, as I was listening, and I was wondering, the dump truck that we want to buy that's $500,000?
Paul, this is the operating budget only, it's nothing to do with capital.
Pardon me?
This is the 2025 introduction of the operating budget, not the capital budget we spoke of prior to the presentation. You can speak about that under public comment. General public comment.
Well, the only thing I wanted to, I wanted to ask what we could do about it, and I can't talk about that now?
Not in the operating budget.
Yeah, we did.
So what can I talk about in the operating budget?
Anything you just heard. You're happy your rate is incrementally going down?
Thank you for doing a good job.
How about thanking Katie and?
Paul, you can make, you can make your comments, it's just not at this juncture in the meeting. This is specifically for the 2025 operating budget, much like when we do for the consent agenda only.
So it's under item number six.
Because I know that you all had questions, like you talked about the trees, that we want to see the trees and all that stuff.
Yeah, it's all capital budget, not the operating budget.
That's not part of it.
No. Yes, Mr. Essler.
I'm Lou Essler, 746 Amarillo's Avenue. I'm here today to invite you, the mayor and council, along with the residents and their friends, to an open house tour.
Mr. Essler?
Today, at our office.
Mr. Essler, can I interrupt you for one second?
11:30 for three. I'm sorry.
Can I interrupt you for one second? This is about the operating budget introduction.
I'm sorry, I thought it was.
No, that's okay, that's going to come very shortly.
Okay, I'll come back.
Ori Katzen. Question, you mentioned, first of all, I would like, I don't think there's a time limit on this one.
I didn't hear anything.
Okay, but I'll be, I'll be short. You mentioned, first of all, you mentioned that a decrease. Just to clarify, the decrease is a rate decrease. That means 2.2% increase is actually less percentage than what we were talking about last year. Am I understanding it correctly?
The, as far as the decrease, the only thing that we were talking about was decrease, and we had savings in two major areas.
No, Ori, if I.
Decrease in rate.
If I hear you correctly, yes, the rate this year is less than it was last year. Your taxes did not go down, the increase.
Exactly, which, which explains what you said before, property values actually went up, but the rate that we are collecting taxes to cover the operating budget and the capital budget, the rate has increased since the property value, the rate has decreased since the property value increased.
Correct.
That is correct, that is correct.
Okay, I do understand, because you said a decrease, it's not decrease in tax, it decrease in rate. Okay. Okay, the second, the second comments that I have is you mentioned a 99% collection rate?
Correct. 99.48% tax collection rate.
Okay, as an investor, I usually buy tax liens at the end of the year, and I know the interest that I'm paying, I know the price I'm paying. Many towns are actually making money from selling those liens. What about the income when you sell those liens to investors who actually buy those liens, paying the town a lot more than owed to the town, and then they get their return in sales? Where's that money?
I believe we do that annually, we have a tax sale for uncollected taxes.
So why can't we actually count on that money when he said 99? Let's count that we actually have more than 100, because the town is actually making more, making money on those tax lien sales.
I think there were, there was one last year.
There was one last year.
Yeah, so there's not multiple, that's.
Okay.
And it's advertised, I believe, yeah.
Okay, but the question is, do we need to have a surplus or any cushion to offset for that? If it's only $500,000, if you anticipate that we're only going to have $500,000?
We're being more conservative, I think, to the point. And that helps our bond rating, that lowers our interest costs.
Mr. Lurch, I'm sorry to cut you off. Correct me if I'm wrong, the reserve for uncollected taxes is because by statute, we're a pass-through entity. Whether we collect 100% of the taxes or 50% of the taxes, we still got to cut checks to the regional school, the local. cut checks to the regional school, the local school.
Absolutely.
The county, the county's open space trust fund. We have to pay them regardless of people paying their debts to the borough.
That's a very good analogy.
So statute requires us to have that reserve.
Okay, that's, that's all I wanted.
That's right.
Thank you so much, that was a great presentation, and the pamphlet is also very clear.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Seeing nobody else for public comment, I'll entertain a motion to close.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Katie or Dieter, can you basically just summarize the purpose of the next four resolutions before the council to amend the 2025 introduced budget for $21,196,970? Sorry, 21,000 would be nice. 21,196,970 to 21,219,900. Resolution 25-122 to authorize a self-exam. Resolution 25-123 waiver of reading. And resolution 25-124 increase in deferred school taxes.
Certainly. What do you call, since you meet the criteria, there's certain state criteria. Historically, every town had to submit their budget to Division of Local Government Services, part of the community affairs, to have that actual budget document reviewed to make sure it complied with statutory, statutory requirements. Since you don't have a deficit, since you don't have an emergency appropriation, since you don't meet any of those exclusions, you are permitted to do your own review. Okay? That's only bestowed on the towns who have the highest standards and don't have those financial kind of problems. So that's the self-review. What we're saying is that, you know, you acknowledge that we did our own review and it meets all the statutory criteria. As far as the amending of the budget, what, once you hold your public hearing, which you just did, once you hold your public hearing, you're now permitted to amend the budget as you see appropriate. I believe the amendment that you have before you tonight is only bringing in some grants, correct?
Yes, one grant and a salary adjustment in the building department.
Okay. So that's the purpose of it. It is not increasing the taxes though, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so there'll be no impact on the taxes, strictly to bring in the grant review of that. And then lastly is the deferred school tax. And I'll share, I'll share this conversation with you, because this is kind of a complex financial area as well. Oradell has what they call the deferred school tax. What that really means is that when they started collecting school taxes in this town, how many years ago, whatever it was, oh, we're over 100 and something years now, they collected all the school's money by December 31st. Yet the school operates till June 30th. All that money was collected. You've collected all the school money. If you were gonna go out of the school business tomorrow, you would not raise a school tax for January 1st to June 30th, because that was already been raised. So that's why you have what we call a deferred school tax. So every time the school levy gets increased, which it did, you're always collecting that six months piece. And that's what a deferred school tax is, so you're actually collecting that extra money. And this year, what was it, 207,000? I don't have the resolution in front of me. I have it right here. Yeah, 300, it was roughly $400,000, which means the school levy went up 800,000. You collected 400 of it, because they always, you've always collected from the taxpayers through June 30th. As of December 31st, 2024, you collected all the money as owed to the school through June 30th, 2026.
Okay. Any questions from the council? Not entertained a motion to approve resolutions 25-121 through 25-124.
So move.
Second.
We have a roll call, please, Melissa?
Mr. Carnaval?
Yes.
Mr. Staff?
Yes.
Mr. Tajian?
Yes.
Mr. Turn?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate all your hard work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I appreciate you keeping nice and cool in here. Oh, but it's nice, it's, you know.
Keep everybody awake.
Yeah, well, you know, me, me, good.
Kate, you want a recess? Five minutes? Are you okay with a five-minute recess?
Come on, we got, we're at the tail end, let's go.
Do you need to excuse yourself for a minute?
All right, I'll excuse myself.
Okay.
All right.
Any old business to come before the council? We have any new business to come before the council tonight?
Mayor, I just have a couple of quick things.
Mr. Kelly.
Just before we meet next, I got a email.
Mr. Kelly, so true to form, new business, not, not committee report.
Yes, I'm gonna save all of that for the next time.
Thank you, sir.
But I did get an email. Habitat is having an information session tomorrow evening and Saturday at the senior center. Tomorrow evening, 6:30, I don't know if this is on the Borough website, but how to learn to apply for the Habitat home in Oradell that I believe they're breaking ground with. They have done some work up there, so that's interesting. At our senior center, Wednesday evening and Saturday evening. Saturday also, again, before we meet again, we're having a town planting day, so right behind this building at 10:00 AM, we could use all the volunteers to help plant the pots, et cetera. And one other item that I don't think can wait is about pedestrian safety. Just real quick, we had a meeting, environmental committee met, I said, let's go across the street, because it was so nice out. It was 7:30 when our seniors, who took advantage of the free entrance fee to seat on rehearsal night, or dress rehearsal night, to the show across the street. So we had many of our seniors taking advantage of that. It was 7:30 at night, I was sitting outside at the restaurant with our committee members, the other committee, and to try to cross this road at that time of night, it was, the person who was looking this way towards the gas station couldn't watch, so they said, Tom, please switch seats. And it was literally a game of chicken, so we need to, I think in the past, I've heard that we have had some type of officer there to help, certainly on theater nights, our residents cross there, that just was way out of control, and I realize that pedestrian safety is number one, but certainly we need to do something soon. I know they only have a couple of shows with this show that's there, but in the fall, whether it's, I think in the past, somebody called over to Borough Hall and got an officer there, or to hire an officer, just at least at that time, and those heavy traffic nights, that it just was that, you know, to have, we had many residents in their 90s trying to cross that road, speeding buses, et cetera, et cetera, at that time, and so that's, that's it there.
Thank you.
One more quick thing, Mayor, for new business. Just wanted to introduce a concept to the mayor and council for consideration, is to create a council position for audit and compliance. I think that it's something that is needed today, and we don't have to discuss it tonight in public, but I'd like to just table it, if you will, for the next mayor and council work session that will pick up in June.
Thank you, Mr. Staff. Anyone else have new business? Okay, now we have public comment for non-agenda items. Anything? Do we have a motion to open?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Mr. Essler, welcome back.
So again, I'm Lou Essler, live at 746 Amarillo's Avenue. So I'm here today to invite the mayor and council, and all the residents and their friends, to an open house tour of our national historic home on Memorial Day from 11:30 to 3 o'clock. Just as a matter of history, 102 years ago, in 1923, Henry Fenner, my godfather, opened an insurance agency on Kinderkoch Road. So now, in 19, here we are now, in the year 2025, we continue to operate at the Fenner Insurance Agency on 467 Kinderkoch Road, opposite the Shell Station. We're also designated as a national historic site. So again, we invite everybody, the mayor and council and their friends, to visit our office for a tour on Memorial Day from 11:30 to 3:00. Thanks, and hope to see some of you.
Thank you, Mr. Essler.
Thank you, Mr. Essler. Paul, this is your chance to make your comments on the capital.
Then I don't have enough time. We'll see if I have enough time left over from whatever I said. I have not received my upper request for information of the grant on our senior building. I am interested in using the, the building as a source of revenue for seniors' programs, such as a bus trip to the World Trade Center Museum, and more activities. I have not seen anything stated on the, started on the kitchen renovation yet, and I understand we have to do this by the month of June, so I don't know what's up. The other topics, the area behind the Major Rossi Memorial, I have a, an idea for that, and it could become a great location for seniors to have activities there, such as horseshoe pitching, bocce ball, chess benches, and relaxing passive walk with a botanical garden ways. And we could put that to use for seniors, because the seniors don't really have a place to go to. How long will it be to have the water fountains and filling stations at all our recreational facilities? It's about health, as well as eliminating plastic litter throughout our town. And when will the three trees be planted at the DPAC entrance? And also, what's up with the farmer's market? I haven't heard anything. Forever chemicals, I want to say something about that. It's PFAS, they call them, per and polyfluoroalkyl substances. My wife, Maritza, and I went to the viewing of the movie Plastic People, and it was an hour and 15 minutes, that is quite graphic and informative. Now, plastics' impact upon the human body started in the 1960s. The toxic chemicals in plastics are approximately 4,200, including heavy metals and lead and arsenic. Now, for the generation that was born in the 1960s, they have much more plastics in their body than I do, because I was born 1947, so I grew up with the right kind of environment. So this is why we have so many problems with, with this next generation, and why they're getting sick. Now petroleum oil is a basic ingredient that has entered the human body. We all have plastic in our bodies, all of us, all of us. As a matter of fact, they said in the, in the movie that you have at least a credit card amount of plastic. Every person has that in their body. The, like I said, the generation born in the 60s is more prominent than our, born before the 60s, after the 60s is more prominent than the senior population. Effects of toxic impacts linked to petroleum birth, early puberty, cancer, neurodevelopment problems, sexual dysfunction, fertility and reproductive issues in women and men. So my wife, Maritza, and I threw our plastic in the recycling bin at the DPW, and now I have a metal thermos, and we bought glasses for everyday drinking beverages, and hopefully this movie, Plastic People, could be shown in our town. And I have the contact information should the council or OPTV have an interest in obtaining the documentary film. Last item, I just want to remind all to look for the label "Made in the USA." It's good for our jobs, as well as for our economy. Wherever possible, quote, "Spend it where you make it," a quote from the IUE Local 485, "You will not regret it." Now, what I did want to ask before about what was said here tonight was about the, the dump truck. Could we rent one and save some money so we don't have to spend all that money this year on it? And also, could we borrow from another town, as we have cooperatives? And also, could we lease vehicles? Maybe we could save some money that way. And that's all I wanted to say on that, that's what I wanted to say. So the only other thing is the regional school taxes are supposed to be less, because now we're not paying that bond issue anymore. So maybe we, our taxes will, will not go up as much, because the regional school taxes should be coming down, because the previous bond was much higher, and they passed, this one was lower. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment on non-agenda items?
Good evening, Ori Catson. Thank you, Paul, for bringing up the plastic issue. I'm just gonna add to that two things. You said people were born in the 1960s and beyond, okay? So I can tell you, it also matter where you were born and the amount of plastic that was used in the place you were born. I know my mom was breastfeeding me for at least three years, and when, when sometimes she was not available, myself and all the other babies, in a place, in a kibbutz in Israel, glass bottles, not plastic bottles, and no microwaves, okay? That's also important. There were no microwaves and no plastic bottles. Plastic was found in dementia and Alzheimer patient after the death in their brains, so it is a contributor. Sugar is also, but plastic is also contributing to Alzheimer and dementia. Things that I wanted to talk about, also the capital budget. Two weeks ago, two weeks ago, or three weeks ago, the police chief came over here and said that he, on his wish, wish list, new body cams and new cameras for the vehicles, because he said the old equipment is aging, the, the interface, the cops don't know how to operate this, I understand. However, what he did not tell us is what exactly is in those cameras. Most police departments, the research that I made and a lot of literature I read, many towns, municipalities, cities in the United States, without telling their residents, are employing body cams and vehicle cameras with the use of AI. There's a lot of concern for privacy, because those cars are driving, the police cars are driving, and every person on the street, they have a facial recognition, they even have, I mean, license plate recognition is an old technology already, but facial recognition, today, they actually identify the car itself in each one of us, in our driveways, from all angles, so those cars can be traced later on. It's good for security, in case they're looking for a wanted vehicle somewhere, but my concern, and I think that some of the people of the town should ask the police department, to what extent the AI in those cameras invade the privacy of the people it's taking place of. I know that there's a lot of restrictions from a lot of places, where you put security cameras, you don't want to, you are not allowed to film your neighbors' properties for security reasons, okay? What about the police and the public safety? I know they're doing it for safety. Where is the privacy? There's a question that needs to be asked before you guys approve the new cameras or the new vehicle cameras for the police department. I wanted to say that. As far as the electric vacuum, street sweeper, just like with generation, first and second generation of electric vehicles, there was no savings. I think that spending twice the amount of money for an electric vehicle like that with. spending twice the amount of money for an electric vehicle like that with the suction of the vacuum with the power that it needs is a mistake. I'm asking you not to go for this. I think the traditional way of doing it with a diesel is going to be the better way. It requires a lot of power. And if that vehicle, the battery runs out, now you have to charge it for six or seven hours. And what is the driver doing at that time? Getting paid without doing anything because they have no equipment to sweep the streets of the borough. So I think that we should stick to diesel and at a lower cost. And also about a current street sweeper that is right now used by the DPW, whenever they do any patchwork on the roads, they coming with that machine that scrapes the surface of the road. And then they go with a street sweeper that is designed for just dust and a few leaves. And they literally pick up the gravel and everything else out of the street. That is something that the use may not be right. And I'll save the rest of it for the next time. And the last thing is Memorial Day is coming up. You heard me push for...
Mr. Katzen, you do this every meeting. We run over the five minutes. Can you please summarize your comments?
So all I want to say is that I'm urging the council to at least consider my proposal.
Thank you very much. Anybody else for public comment and non-agenda items? Non-entertain a motion to close.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Meeting, look for a motion to open for consent agenda items only.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Yeah, before, Paul, I have a question, which may be a question you're asking. What are resolutions 25, 134, and 135?
Yes.
Do we...
It was in closed session.
We didn't bring anything forward.
Well, there's one that's supposed to be on here that's not, but we'll have to deal with that at another meeting. So today's consent agenda will only be considered for resolutions 125 through 133.
Okay, that's good.
134 and 135 will not be considered at this meeting.
Did we have a closed session this meeting today?
We did.
Could you just tell us the topics of what the closed session was about?
Mr. Bailey?
Contract negotiations and personal matters and potential litigation.
Contract negotiations of what...
We can't disclose that at this time.
No topic, just any contract negotiation?
No.
Okay.
They are handled.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment on agenda items only?
Motion to close public comment?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Melissa, can you read the correspondence into the record, please?
Sure. Number one is the invitation to the Boy Scouts Court of Honor. And number two is a letter from Lorna Beebe regarding a tax refund for 345 Berf Street.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is, we have the minutes of the meeting of March 25th, 2025 for approval. We have a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Carnaval?
Yes.
Mr. Staff?
Yes.
Mr. Tajian?
Yes.
Mr. Kern?
Yes.
Mr. Gallow?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
We might not have done this in the past, but it may be past practice. Can I entertain a motion to file a correspondence, please?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Actually, Mayor, we've not been at the full meeting for the 25th of March. I think I should revise that to...
So would you like to abstain?
I would like to.
Can we reflect Mr. Kern's vote to abstain?
Yes.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. Does any member of the council wish to pull any item for separate vote or have questions on any item listed herein? Hearing, non-entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda for resolution, can you guys wait till I'm done? Because I'm going to gavel you in two seconds. For resolutions 25, 125 through resolution 25-133.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Carnaval?
Yes.
Mr. Staff?
Yes.
Mr. Tajian?
Yes.
Mr. Kern?
Yes.
Mr. Gallow?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Thank you, gentlemen. Next on the agenda are ordinances. Mr. Carnaval?
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance number 25-4 is ready for first reading.
Will the Borough Clerk read ordinance number 25-4 by title only?
Borough of Oradell vacating certain paper streets.
Mr. Bailey, would you like to give a brief explanation?
Certainly. With respect to the vacation of the paper streets, actually in DPAC and immediately adjacent to it, due to, thanks to the diligence of Negli Engineering and surveys and title searches they did, there's a series of paper streets that have been there for who knows how long. So the purpose of this ordinance, so if you're looking at DPAC, you wouldn't know it, but there's paper streets cutting across it. What this does is it vacates them and then makes them part of the park, essentially. So there's no question that they're borough-owned and parkland property. So that's the purpose of this. There's a series of them. We initially thought it was only a couple, but over time, there's been, they've been called different things and stuff like that. So that's what that ordinance is for. And then, you know, that would, again, make it part of the parkland and not developable.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey.
Not to make this a discussion, but Steve, has the historical committee discussed that at all? Because there is a reason why paper roads exist.
Councilman Tashin, we're in an introduction. There'll be time for questions when we can certainly do that.
Perfect, thank you.
Because we have to read it a second time for adoption.
So I'd like to make a motion that ordinance number 25-4 be passed on first reading and published in the Monday, May 19th, 2025 edition of the Bergen Record.
Second.
We have a roll call, please.
Sure. Mr. Carnaval?
Yes.
Mr. Staff?
Yes.
Mr. Tajian?
Yes.
Mr. Kern?
Yes.
Mr. Gallow?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mayor, ordinance number 25-5 is ready for first reading.
Will the Borough Clerk read ordinance number 25-5 by title only, please?
An ordinance of the Borough of Oradell amending Chapter 165, parking lots, municipal specifically 165-10, regulating for specific municipal parking lots, and amending Chapter 280, vehicles and traffic specifically 280-34, schedule five, six, seven...
Eight.
Schedule eight, stop intersections 280-39, schedule 13, parking prohibited at all times, and 280-40, schedule 15, parking prohibited certain hours. 280-53 dot one, emergency no parking declaration, and 280-60, declaration of snowstorm emergency removal of vehicles.
Melissa, just one correction. It's 280-41, schedule 15, parking prohibited.
Got it.
Mr. Bailey?
Yeah, these amendments were proposed in conjunction with our traffic sergeant who recommended them just to improve safety and circulation in the municipality. One pertains to the Park Avenue parking lot and distances, I'm sorry, Park Avenue, for example, restricting the parking from, for example, on the north side, west from Kinderkamak Road, 225 feet, to revise that to make it 500 feet. Also, some changes on Orchard Street and Lotus Ave, 200 feet from Kinderkamak Road West, and on Lotus, 195 feet from Kinderkamak Road West. And I'm looking for my red line version. That's the gist of it. There's also a change on the Park Avenue parking lot, restricting two parking spaces in the northwest corner of the lot for more than 15 minutes at any time.
Thank you, sir.
I'd like to make a motion that ordinance number 25-5 be passed on first reading and published in the Monday, May 19th, 2025 edition of the Bergen Record.
Second.
We have a roll call, please.
Mr. Carnaval?
Yes.
Mr. Staff?
Yes.
Mr. Tajian?
Yes.
Mr. Kern?
Yes.
Mr. Gallow?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Okay. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you.